Of all good gifts, we thank you for your blessing. We ask that you bless us with wisdom and guide us with your courage and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be good stewards to those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us the insight to believe with integrity and help us make decisions to reflect what is right and good and guard us from our blind subject. Dear Lord, grant us the ability to always seek your will in all that we do and say it in your name of praise.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone. I'll now call to order the January 21st, 2020 City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Hensley.
Present.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Item three, I'll ask for an adoption of the agenda by also moving item 18A2 and three, which is second closed session under item 20. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Item four miscellaneous agenda items. And we will begin by recognizing Judy Van Sant with her first place winning piece of artwork called "Letting Go." And it is currently, or the contest was from the Jefferson City Museum of Modern Art downtown from the Fall High School Abstract Art Contest, and it will soon to be hanging in City Hall. So I'd like to invite Judy along with Chris Dur and her art teacher. Welcome. We're glad to have you all here tonight. Yes, you can come on up to the podium here and you can just move the mic up a little bit there. Thank you.
Well, actually, I am from J.C. MoMA, Jeff City Museum of Modern Art. I'm the director there. So I won't claim art teacher. She gets those skills from somewhere else. Amazing. But this is Judy, and I'll let her introduce herself and her piece. Need to hold it for you? Thank you. Okay. Hello, my name is Judy Van Sant. I'm 17, and I am a senior at Jefferson City High School. So about my piece, I titled my piece "Letting Go." So as like a young artist, I kind of grew up watching Bob Ross and like his very detailed, step-by-step paintings. And so I'm really just used to like the really detailed and exact paintings. So when my art teacher introduced this contest to me, I've never really done any abstract paintings because personally I always thought it was always kind of messy and I always just liked it neat and organized. So this was a really new experience. Basically, I was kind of having trouble like figuring out what to do and how to start it, what colors. And my art teacher, Lori Jo, was basically was like, just, just do something, just put some paint somewhere and you know, spread the brush around and just see what happens. And so that's what I did. And yeah, kind of had to like let go of that kind of like Bob Ross-ness that I kind of grew up with. Well, we are super proud of Judy, and so she won the first place position of our Fall Art Contest for all high school students in the area. And so it was specifically abstract, and so we're very proud of her.
We are proud of you, and it's a beautiful piece of art. It's really amazing, the colors and just knowing the story behind it and the letting go and what that means is inspiring for all of us to kind of get out of our comfort level with whatever it is that we're used to doing in life. And in this case, it's with your art, and it's amazing what beautiful things can happen when we really kind of think beyond what we're just used to doing within our comfort zone. And it's a beautiful piece, and thank you for sharing that with us. And I did purchase your artwork, so now it will officially belong to City Hall, and we will keep it here. And I love having student artwork here. I think it's really neat to see the creativity we have in this community, and appreciate you doing that. Does council have any questions for this future artist, current artist, and for the future? Do you think you want to go into art as a career?
Um, yes.
Well, good for you. Well, you have a great start, so we'll look forward to watching your career. And do you have somebody with you in the audience that you want to introduce also?
Oh, I have my dad.
Great. Well, thank you for being here, too. So we appreciate it. It's always fun having students at City Hall, and we are glad to welcome you here. So we'd love to get a picture if you want to come up with your artwork, and then we'll look forward to displaying it here at City Hall. All right, so Judy, we'll invite you to come back next time you're at City Hall and get to see it hanging up in the front office there. Thank you all. And item B, we have with us Kim Robertson with the American Heart Association to present the city of Jefferson with the Gold Workplace Health Achievement Index Award. Welcome, along with Mrs. Strope.
Hi there. Like she said, my name's Kim Robertson, and I'm with the American Heart Association. And I'm here to present the city of Jefferson with the Gold Workplace Health Achievement Award. Last year, they were a silver winner, and this year, they were a gold winner. So they really have stepped up their game. This achievement is really for companies placing a lot of value on their employees' health. So they have a wonderful health program here for their employees, and this year, we had 65% of the employees that participated in the program. So this program really helps employees get up and get moving and focus on their diet and exercise and just mental health even. And so we're really, really proud of the city for focusing on that and for really placing a big emphasis on their employees' health.
Great. How do you practice that?
I'd also like to, I'm not sure if everyone here has had the opportunity to meet Cindy Bitterman. Cindy is our part-time wellness coordinator, and she works part-time three days a week. And she is one who is really behind a lot of the emphasis that we do in trying to help the employees, and she did a lot of work towards this award this year, too.
Thank you. And Cindy, you passed around this, or do you want to let us know what this is as well?
As part of being gold status, we are in the Forbes Magazine, and if you look on the back page, you will see where the city of Jefferson is listed.
Well, that's pretty cool. That's great. Well, we are glad to have that recognition, and thank you all for your work in keeping our employees healthier, and we'll continue to try to achieve that every year. Does council have any questions? Okay. Well, we'd love to get a picture with the award if you all want to come forward. And I'm wearing my chief's red, but I'll say it's also the Heart Association red, too, right? So we can use it for both tonight. in retirement as the Cole County's Emergency Management Director. So we'd like to invite Bill to come to the podium. And of course, we all know Bill. We've known you for many years. How many years have you been working?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth year in this position.
Yes.
So we've been working with you for many years, but even more so since May 22nd.
Exactly.
On a more of a daily basis instead of just as needed. So I know you really took the lead in many aspects of the flooding and tornado, and we appreciate your expertise.
Thank you.
And we're sad to see that you're going to be retiring, but we're also happy for you.
Thank you for that, for sure.
So tell us what you're doing.
Yeah.
Is this your last stop? Are you done now?
February 28th is actually the last working day, yes.
Great.
Yeah, so we've got a lot to do before that. But yes, it's still going on, so it's good.
Great. Well, we appreciate the partnership between the city and county and having you in that position. I know we've relied on you for so many things over the years, and we'll miss having you in that position. So is there anything, does council have any questions or comments for Bill?
I might add, you talk, go ahead, Rick, go ahead.
I just said there was a gathering for Bill and a couple from the city, a couple of folks from the city, including myself, spoke there and congratulated him for his retirement. But there were some people that weren't so flattering, but in a nice way, I think.
Yeah. A lot of history there.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, when you're in the, this is actually my 45th year in emergency services, so as of November, so yeah, a lot of good friends, a lot of good contacts. Somebody came out the other night, some roasted me pretty good, so it was good. It was funny, but it was good. But I just want to add, you talk about the cooperative agreement with the city and county, and I think that's so important. I've just always called it our community. As you know, or some of you may not know, that cooperative agreement for sharing emergency management started in 1989. The MOU is still there, still in effect. But when you look at all the stuff they've done since I've been here, you know, we have 31 outdoor warning siren systems now in the city and the county, where we only had a few back many years ago. But that cooperative agreement between city and county in 2012, between city and county, we spent three quarters of a million dollars on that system. And a lot of it was, you know, when I came onboard in 2008, there was none in the county. The city was old, outworn, very costly. Three-phase electricity, it cost you a lot of money every month to operate them. If we had a power outage, we had no warning systems. We've upgraded that to some of the best, I think, in the United States. But that's all with each and every you, the council, the commission agreeing. Preaching that for several years, and then what happened? Joplin happens, and everybody says, you know, we really need to look at that. We proved that May 22nd. We had no life loss. I've heard so many people, even though they're outdoor systems, that hurt them indoors, they took cover. So I'm proud of that with the city and county. A lot of things we've done with the Smart 911 recently, I mean, it's slow-going, but it's building up, building up. I think all those things, as a group together, we've done to try to help the citizens of our community and better prepare. We've all learned lessons from the May tornado, I know I have. Been in the business a long time, but whenever you, when it hits you that hard and you're kind of frightened, making sure you're trying to do everything, you're worried about people's lives, what are we going to do with them? But when I walk in that emergency operations center when we got open, and I see professionals in there like Chief Schofield, Chad, Dave Brown, Brett Smith, Public Works, Cole County Public Works, all these people around that table, the weight just went off my shoulders. I knew we were going to be okay. We had professionals there, support from city and county, and meant a lot, meant a lot. As you know, we had a meeting today. And to see somebody come out from FEMA government, from Washington DC, and see what we had done, and I've said this over and over, they praised our community for coming together so fast. They just don't see that in disasters around the United States and want to know how we did it. I said, it's just, it's a community effort. But when you get that praise from that level down to my level on the local, that's very important and very gratifying. So not that I did it by myself at all, because with the help of all of our professionals, all the police officers, all the public works, all the fire, city and county, all of our neighbors that came in to help, that's what it's all about. So I thank you all very much.
Well, absolutely. And Bill, we thank you for your service and know that you will be missed. And it's very clear that a lot of the work that you've done over the years and decisions you've made, like the outdoor warning sirens and all the other things you advocated for have saved lives and will continue to. And we just appreciate your help and assistance with our community. We wish you the best in your retirement. And no pressure, but there is a replacement, so no pressure to you, Ciara. We have Ciara Thomas with us. I'd like to invite Ciara to come up.
Get your pen and paper out, because I'm going to give you your cellphone number.
So we'd like to meet Ciara. And we also have County Commissioner Jeff Helsher with us. So Jeff, if you'd like to come up to the podium as well, you're welcome to come up. Okay, well, we appreciate you being here and support as well, and we'd like to welcome Mrs. Thomas.
Yes. Ciara Thomas, she's originally from Russellville, started January the 1st. So we've been going through a lot of meetings, letting her introduce a lot of people and kind of getting to know a lot of things we do, especially with the tornado, our short-term recovery, long-term recovery, still working through all that and all the other meetings with SEMA and a lot of other folks, and the fire service, emergency services. So Ciara's cellphone number is 658-0002, not 619-9914. Anyway, we welcome her. I think she's going to do a great job being local. She's been in emergency management before. I think she's going to fit right in, so I hope you'll welcome her, work with her, as she will you. I am very, very thankful for that.
Well, we're glad to have you here, Ms. Thomas. Would you like to say a few words?
Just that I'm very humbled and appreciative of the position you're guys entrusting me. I'm well aware that I have some giant shoes to fill, and I've heard that over and over again for the last two and a half weeks. I get it. But yeah, I mean, it's just a huge honor. I'm from here, I'm from the community, so I think that I can do great things. And with Chief's backing and the Sheriff's Department and the city departments and everything else, I think that, I mean, we can only go up from here. So I appreciate everybody's support, and you got my cellphone number, so.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Ciara and Bill, and we look forward to working with you and for all of our council members to get to know you, and hopefully on the blue-sky days, not for disasters, but at the same time, we know that we know how important it is to have you all here and helping our city. So any questions? Well, I'd like to get a picture with you, Bill, and I'd like to present to you a city coin for your service to our community. So thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
closed today for city council, so I'd like to be the first to publicly congratulate Councilman Hensley, Councilman Fitzwater, and Councilwoman Wiseman on their reelection. So all three of them are unopposed, and I think that says a lot that the community appreciates all three of your leadership on the council, and so very glad to be moving forward with all of you. And Councilman Mahalovich and Prather, unfortunately, you all will be termed out in April, so we still have some time, and we appreciate your.
Looking out for two more years after that.
That's right, because you can come back. That's true. That's true. And Hank doesn't know I'm going to do this, but I did want to recognize that Hank Vogt is here. So do you want to just come up and introduce yourself here, because pretty soon, you're going to have a seat up here in Councilman Prather's seat. So Hank Vogt, so we didn't have to say vote for vote, because you're actually now will be.
Well, go ahead and use it, just so people get my name right.
There you go. So we're going to, we'll look forward to welcoming you in April, but I wanted to take a moment and introduce you to the council.
Thank you. My name is Hank Vogt. I'm a Realtor at RE/MAX. I've been living in the community for about 22 years, living out on the East End in Ward One for a little over 10 years. Been at RE/MAX for 18 years. Before that, I was a Human Resources Manager for Midwest Block &amp; Brick. That's why I came to Jefferson City, and I've loved it here ever since. And had some people that asked me to be, to consider running for city council, and had our Board of Realtors and some other community leaders. And so after much consideration, I decided to go for it. Today filing closed, and I am, I guess, the only candidate for the position, so.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And we're happy for you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming up there on the spot. I appreciate your introduction. Thank you, Mr. Vogt, soon-to-be councilman. Okay, item five, we have no public hearings. Item six, appointments by the mayor. Mrs. Strope.
Thank you. We have four appointments this evening. The first is Penny Quigg to the Planning and Zoning Commission. She has been serving as an alternate member, and this is to move her into complete a full term. And then there are three reappointments to the Police Personnel Board, Dan Clint, Pete Fleishman, and Stacy Backus.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on the appointments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. We don't have any this evening. Item eight, announcements by council. Do we have any council announcements or committee meetings? Councilman Mahalovich.
We have a finance meeting this Thursday at 7:30 across the hall. We will be taking up initial start of what might be called local choice, local preference in bidding. So I'd welcome your comments on the early stages of that discussion.
Okay, thank you, councilmen. Are there any other committees? Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Ward. I want to say Laura, but Ward. Thank you.
We have a rescheduled Human Relations Commission meeting this Friday. It was rescheduled from last Friday due to weather. It's at 8 o'clock across the hall.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, and you can see all of those at JeffersonCityMo.gov. Item B, census update. We had our first Complete Count Committee meeting last Monday, and you can be sure to follow the census on social media and check out their website, and there is a link on the city's website. Does staff have anything to add at this time on the census? Okay. And I'll give my announcements this morning. At the Housing Authority meeting, we presented a proclamation to Jack Pletz for his retirement on behalf of the city. Any other announcements? Okay. Item nine, Lincoln University Student Representative update. I don't believe Carolyn is back quite yet, but I think classes are about to start. So any updates from Lincoln? Councilman Hussey.
I would just add that yesterday was the MLK Breakfast at Quinn Chapel hosted by the NAACP, and Caroline was the featured entertainment with her singing abilities. We got to get her to sing at a council meeting, is all I'm going to say, that she can do quite well. So if you see her, you know, and even though you weren't there, just say you've heard the community talking about how great of a job that she did that day. So it was extremely impressive.
Great. We appreciate you being there and the council members that were able to attend, and look forward to hearing Carolyn perform as well. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. We do have Mrs. Carolyn, or I'm sorry, Carol Weberg here, along with Mr. Weberg, if the Webergs would like to come forward and present on bill. It is 201984. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Carol Weberg, and I own 202 East High Street. And I reached out to many of you today to let you know that if the settlement agreement is made, that we are, we're ready to go. We have a brick mason that's ready to come in there right away and start working on it. We have renters that are eager and ready to start renting, and we're actually just ready to move on with our lives. I mean, this has all been in all of our lives, probably way too long. And we wanted to come in and see if, you know, if anybody has any questions, but like I said, we're ready to move on.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does council have any questions? Okay. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And then I think that's all for item 10. And then item 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced, 201996.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement with MoDOT for public transit operating assistance.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is our Transit Operating Assistance Grant that is administered by MoDOT. The grant is for $11,284 this year. And basically, that's a 50-50 match grant, and of course, our expenses in transit will exceed that, and so we'd recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. 201997.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Centec and Associates for heating, air conditioning, and refrigeration maintenance services.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Kind of as clerk indicated, this is an agreement with Centec for our maintenance of our HVAC. All the departments utilize them for the maintenance through this contract on an hourly basis. The previous years, we were around $70,000 citywide, and they've done a good job in the past for us. They've had the contract in the past, and this is the first year of a potentially three-year renewal.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Okay, 201998.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending the FY 2020 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the Park Fund.
Mr. Greffrath.
Thank you. We are requesting supplemental appropriation of $800,000 to purchase the property at 63 Diamond Sports Complex. $750,000 of that will be allocated for the purchase of the property. $50,000 will be allocated for the startup of concession equipment and other equipment as needed, as well as maintenance costs.
Thank you. Councilman Kimna.
And at the request of the commission, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and take this up this evening.
Okay, we have a request to suspend the rules. Are there any objections? Okay, seeing none, we will take up 201998. Is there any further council questions or deliberation? Councilman Hussey.
Just have a few questions, and some of them came up prior, too, but I think it's good just to have it in the public dialogue. So the source of the funding is the fund balance, so what will that take the fund balance to for the Parks Department after this?
After the $800,000 is taken out, it will leave the fund balance at approximately $1.2 million.
Okay. And so is your team, and I guess our finance department, comfortable that this doesn't impact our ability to repay those bonds, that everything's still on track, or?
We did review the 10-year forecast that was prepared for the bond document, and this does not bring it below a level, the fund balance below a level in the 10 years, below the required 10% minimum.
And then another question would be about, so the property is currently outside the city limits, correct? So how do we service that property for our first responders? Is that done by city police and fire, or is that done by Callaway County?
That's a great question. Currently, it's set up for Callaway. However, Director Spalding is working with Chief Schofield and Chief Schrader to incorporate us into their emergency action plans.
Okay. And I guess it's not even really contiguous to the city property out there, because the city limits end on that road right before you cross that bridge, and so there's probably no ability to annex this. I'm assuming not.
There's some state law that suggests that there are opportunities for annexation of non-contiguous properties. We'll have to do a little bit more research, but essentially, for operation purposes, it really doesn't affect how that operates kind of either way. So just kind of need to pick a path and decide how we want to deal with it, but I don't think the annexation of the property is going to affect us too much either way. of the property is gonna affect us too much either way, since it's all city-owned property.
And then, Aaron, I know one thing, and Director Spalding's report cited, that additional ball fields are a good thing, and there's sort of a limited supply, or do you anticipate that we will still utilize all of the ball fields that are in the parks system right now in addition to these, or is there plans to sort of convert some of that space to other things?
I would say for the short term, we'll definitely look at incorporating all of them, because we definitely need them. I know, long-term, there's been talks of what will we do with Lyons Field as it continues to flood over time? You know, is that something we want to continue to keep as a ball field, or, you know, change it into something else as far as parks-related?
Great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ward?
Is this property currently in the floodplain?
It is. Since it was constructed in 95, this was the first time that it's ever flooded. Obviously, we don't know if that's gonna happen again, but our fingers are crossed it won't.
Okay. And due to that, is the current footprint of that property meet FEMA regulations? I ask that because there were other park properties after this last flooding that FEMA came back and said, "You shouldn't have constructed this, and you shouldn't have had this." I mean, currently, what is there on that property? Is it okay with FEMA regs? You're not gonna have to, like, remove fences or concession stands, or, and if you change what you're gonna do to the property maybe in the future, you know, looking at the FEMA regs, you know, how is that going to drive what you can do?
So I'll have to follow up with Director Spalding on that to make sure, and I'll get you an answer, exact answer, but to my knowledge, there's not any type of issues that are out there in regards to FEMA. I can address that a little bit, a little bit tonight. So, the previous example that you're talking about, those were flood buyout properties where the city purchased the money using federal funds, and a part of receiving, the conditions on receiving federal funds require that those properties be deed restricted to be dedicated to open space forever, and so that was part of the problem with the other park properties. There was too much buildup, and so they kind of crossed the line for being intensively used as opposed to open space. This property is not deed restricted, and so we don't have a similar problem. And so, while it could impact any type of future construction, the existing, the existing facilities there are, you know, they're within what is allowed under current regulation. So we're, we should be good there, as long as we're not looking to, you know, build towers or, you know, more, more, more stuff, but it's, you know, kind of as is. It's where it needs to be.
Any other, Councilman Mahalovich?
I think I've just, I think I might have answered my own question here with the budget. This is still within the 10% of fund balance as required by our financial policies, right? Because I believe they have an 8.7, is that right? Thereabouts?
No, that was the 2018 ending fund balance, the 8.7 that you're talking about.
Okay, I'm talking about their overall, a percentage of their fund balance that remains.
It's 10% of their approved-
Yes.
-or adopted budget.
Right.
Yes, and it is, it is close to that $900,000 range.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? I think you mentioned, Mr. Greffrath, the reason why, the reason that you've requested the request to suspend the rules in act this evening. Did you mention that earlier? Did we already talk about that?
No, we didn't mention that. I think part of that is just with spring sports gearing up and, you know, having access to practice fields, and I think there's some tournaments getting lined up. I think they just wanted to make sure that they had plenty of time to get that squared away, so that was one of the reasons to suspend the rules, is so they can get started with that.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Kemna? Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham. Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Bill passes. Item 13, bills pending, 2019-85.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic by modifying Schedule A speed limits and Schedule D one-way roads to match existing signage.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, it's a cleanup of City Code for the, basically during, working on some 911 dispatching issues, noticed some discrepancies, and these clean those up. This cleans those up.
Any questions, deliberations? Roll call, please.
Graham. Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman. Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham. Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman. Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham. Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman. Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham. Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman. Fitzwater.
Bill passes. 2019-87.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic by adding a time limit zone on the southeast side of the 600 block of Marshall Street.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Again, the modification of the time limit, or adding a time limit to this area, 90-minute time limit, 8 to 5 Monday through Saturday. Neighborhood barbershop in the area requested this to allow some customer parking turnover and traffic and Transportation Commission reviewed it and recommended approval.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman. Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham. Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman. Fitzwater.
Bill passes. 2019-88.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 of the Code of the City of Jefferson by extending the parking restriction on the south side of Madeline Place.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, extend the no parking restriction on Madeline Place. Basically, the street's 23-foot wide. That barely supports one-side parking, so this ordinance would remove all the parking on the one side of the street. Citizen requests to the Traffic and Transportation Commission. They recommend approval to the council.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman. Fitzwater.
Bill passes. 2019-89.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Cole County setting procedures for joint city and county capital improvement sales tax projects.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. After, with each city-county project, we have a project agreement. This one's for the East High Street project we just spoke of. It outlines that the county would cover half of that project, almost around $966,000, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman. Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham. Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2019-90.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a professional services agreement with Midwest ATC Service Incorporated for the purpose of providing air traffic control services at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport for the period of July 1, 2019 through July 30, 2020.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, air traffic control agreement at the airport, it's always late coming to us, has to go through the federal review as well, so it actually covers from this last July through June of this year. The cost is $90,708 per year. That cost is 18% of the total contract cost. It's based on a formula from the FAA. The, and the city is also eligible to apply for a grant to reimburse approximately 50% of this cost, so we'll be pursuing that as we have each year in the past.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman. Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham. Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman. Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham. Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Bill passes.
2019-91.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri submitting an amendment to the Charter of the City of Jefferson relating to prohibitions and incompatible offices to a vote of the citizens of the City of Jefferson.
Mr. Mollman.
Thank you. This bill would send to the voters of the City of Jefferson at the April 7, 2020 general municipal election, a question asking whether to amend Section 12.2 prohibitions of the city charter. This includes two provisions, C and D, within, within Section 12.2. Amendments to Section 12.2C would prohibit former council members and mayors from accepting compensative appointed positions with the city until at least two years after the expiration of their term. And then, a new subsection 12.2D would prohibit council members, mayor, city administrator, city clerk, city counselor, department directors, and members of the Parks and Recreation Commission from also serving as publicly elected governing body members of other political subdivisions and statewide elected offices or in the Missouri General Assembly during their city terms. This, there's an exception to that. The exception is that if such person is serving in their capacity as a city officer.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman. Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham. Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Bill passes. So you will see all of those on the April 7.
Can I take just a moment and just, Councilwoman Wiseman is not here for shepherding these through the committee, and Councilman Fitzwater and Councilman Hensley attended a lot of those charter committee meetings in the spring and summer of 2018? A long time ago, so thank you to the, thank you to the council for taking these up. It's two years' worth of work to get these here, so I'm glad that we can kind of close out the work of that charter committee, put these on the ballot for the voters to decide and see where things fall.
Great comments. Thank you, Councilman. 2019-95.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing the right-of-way of Morningside Drive and various stormwater and sanitary sewer easements in the vicinity of Orchard Heights subdivision.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. This was a previously platted subdivision, and it's located just east of the, what we call the Rock Cut on McCarty Street between there and Eastland, and that subdivision was originally platted back in the 60s, and then subsequently in 2006, there was another proposal. That one never actually got filed, but, so this would vacate any easements or right-of-way that were part of the original subdivision, and allow the owner to reconfigure the plat
in statewide elected offices, or in the Missouri General Assembly during their city terms. There's an exception to that. The exception is that if such person is serving in their capacity as a city officer.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman? Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham? Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Bill passes. 2019-92.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, submitting an amendment to the Charter of the City of Jefferson relating to residency requirements for the city administrator, city clerk, and city counselor to a vote of the citizens of the City of Jefferson.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. This bill would send to the voters of the City of Jefferson at the April 7, 2020 general municipal election a question whether to amend provisions within the city charter relating to residency requirements for the offices of city administrator, city clerk, and city counselor. Essentially, this would require all three offices be residents of the city, and would allow for a six-month grace period for someone appointed to those positions to move into the city with a one-time extension for a total of a year for that residency to get established.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman? Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham? Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather? Schreiber?
Bill passes. 2019-93.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, submitting an amendment to the Charter of the City of Jefferson relating to legislative proceedings to a vote of the citizens of the City of Jefferson.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. This bill would send to the voters of the City of Jefferson a question on the April 7, 2020 general municipal election relating to legislative procedures of the city council. Specifically, Proposition C would propose amendments to Section 3.11(c) of the city charter. First of all, the proposed amendments would specify that bills would have a primary bill sponsor, and also could have multiple cosponsors, but the cosponsors would not have the same power as the primary bill sponsor. Specifically, only the primary bill sponsor would have the ability to place a bill on the informal calendar. But does specify that the primary bill sponsor, or a majority of the council, may pull a bill off of the informal calendar. This is codifying existing practice, which is contained in the city's administrative code, and placing that authority into the charter. Second, the Proposition C would also codify another current city practice that any single member of the city council can call for full reading of a bill. Thirdly, the Proposition C would ask for an amendment, which would also codify a current city practice of allowing any member to request suspension of the rules, requiring 96 hours between first reading and final passage of a bill. Currently, authority to request suspension of the rule is only conferred in the city charter by inference. Next, the proposed amendment specifies that bills are immediately placed on the informal calendar, giving clarification on when those informal calendar items are placed on the informal calendar, and then informing when they can be pulled off. And then finally, the proposed amendment deletes the term "lie on the table" to describe bills that are pulled off of the informal calendar to eliminate language that is believed to be archaic.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Wiseman? Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham? Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Bill passes, so you will see all those on the April 7 ballot.
Can I take just a moment and just show Councilwoman Wiseman, who's not here, for shepherding these through the committee? And Councilman Fitzwater, and Councilman Hensley attended a lot of those charter committee meetings in the spring and summer of 2018? A long time ago, so thank you to the council for taking these up. It's two years' worth of work to get these here, so I'm glad that we can kind of close out the work of that charter committee, put these on the ballot for the voters to decide and see where things fall.
Great comments. Thank you, councilman. 2019-95.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing the right-of-way of Morningside Drive and various stormwater and sanitary sewer easements in the vicinity of Orchard Heights subdivision.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This was a previously platted subdivision, and it's located just east of the, what we call the rock cut on McCarty Street, between there and Eastland. And that subdivision was originally platted back in the 60s, and then subsequently in 2006, there was another proposal. That one never actually got filed. But, so this would vacate any easements or right-of-way that were part of the original subdivision, and allow the owner to reconfigure the plat to more his liking to build homes there.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham? Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Bill passes. Item 14, we have no resolutions. Item 15, presentations from the gallery. We don't have anyone signed up this evening. Item 16, is there any council and staff discussion of presentation topics? Item 17, we need a motion to approve the January 6, 2020 closed session minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Graham? Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Have seen.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman? Sorry, Fitzwater?
Motion passes?
Fitzwater?
Yeah, everybody. Okay.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now it passes. Item 18, new business. Item A. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri. The chair will entertain a motion to go in a closed session to discuss the following legal actions, causes of actions of litigation involving a public governmental body, Section 610.0211.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman? Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Motion passes, so we will go into closed session. And to make it easier, we will go, the council will go across the hall to the Boone Bancroft Room, and that way, those of you that want to stay in this room can, and we will reconvene back here in open session. Thank you. Okay, welcome back, everyone. We are back in open session. Okay, so at this time, we are on item 19, the informal calendar. We have item 2019-79. And bill sponsor, Councilman Hussey, what's your desire on that bill?
Leave that one on the informal calendar.
Leave it on the informal? Okay. Item 2019-84. Councilman Hussey, yes.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull that off the informal and take up for consideration this evening.
Okay. So 2019-84.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $283,000 contract with ARSI Incorporated for selective demolition of structures at 200 East High Street and 202 East High Street.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill would execute a contract with the Bestness Removal Services Incorporated. They've proposed two base bids. One would take down both 200 and 202 East High Street simultaneously. The second base bid, Base Bed B, would only take down 200 East High Street. The dollar amount on that is $186,000, and that is staff's recommendation. Be glad to answer any and all questions.
Thank you. Councilman Hussey?
Madam Mayor, I would ask that we take up, make a motion to take up substitute number one for this bill.
Thank you. Mr. Mollman, would you want to?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second, would you want to explain the substitute?
Sure thing. So substitute number one essentially swaps out the scope of work from the previous bill. Previous bill had a scope of work that would take down both 200 and 202 East High Street. The substitute bill provides a scope of work in which 200 East High Street is the only building that is demolished.
Okay, so we have a substitute, a motion, and a second, so we will take up the substitute, and then we will take up the bill as substituted. So at this time, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion on taking up substitute number one? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman? Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
No.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Motion passes, so we will now take up the bill as substituted. Any council discussion? Councilman Graham?
I just want to go on record saying, before we make this vote, is that certainly I am in support of taking down 200 East High Street, the building. I want to say that, and I'll continue to say that. But the way in which we're going to be doing it is my major concern. And that's spending taxpayers' dollars to take down someone else's building. So I want, once again, I'm going to say that I'm for taking down 200 East High Street. Hope we can save 202. But for us to spend taxpayers' dollars for someone else's building, I don't think is right. So I just wanted to make that before we make the official vote.
Any further council questions, comments, deliberation? And I will say, since I will not be able to vote on this, knowing even there won't be a tie, because we don't have an even number, so I would vote in favor of the substitute that we have. If that did come to me in a vote, it won't, but I still would like to say that I would support the substitute on the table. With that being said, roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman? Fitzwater?
No.
Graham?
No.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Bill passes. I do want to thank staff for the, I know it's taken a lot of extra work on these bills, and appreciate staff and council's time on this bill. Thank you. All right, item 20, unfinished business. And at this time, we are, we have another closed session that we're going to go into. We wanted to reconvene so that if those that are here for that particular item could see where we ended up with that. But before we go into closed session for the final time on a different topic, is there any other unfinished business? Okay, seeing none. Pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statute of Missouri, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following. Leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate by a public governmental body where public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration therefore, Section 610.0212. Or sealed bids and related documents until the bids are open, and sealed proposals and related documents, or any documents related to a negotiated contract until a contract is executed, or all proposals are rejected. Section 610.02112. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman? Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
All right, motion passes, so we will reconvene for closed session again across the hall, and... Yeah, across the hall again. All right, thank you all for being here. Thanks.